I'm calling Newport City Council meeting for Monday, October 16, 2017, 6:30 PM. City Council Room. Members of the council are present. I'll list the city manager, Laura Dogan, and the City Clerk, Treasurer, James Johnson. The first item will be a public hearing on the East Side Water Tower in preparation for the November 7 vote. And we have Wayne Elliott and Nate Peon from Alderton Elliott to give us a presentation. And they will present everything. And then at the end of the presentations, the floor will be opened up for questions to ask for their presentation.
Thanks, Paul. Good evening. Nate Peon from Alderton Elliott, and also Wayne Elliott. I'm here to give your presentation. And as Mayor mentioned, if we could hold all questions until the end of the presentation, and I'm sure some of the questions you may have will be answered as we move through the slides. So as everyone probably already aware, we're here for the East Side Water Tower Public Informational Hearing. This is the first of two. Start the presentation. The east side, what we refer to during this presentation is located on Route 5, 105, out as you head towards Derby. Starts near the existing Talon Hill Reservoir, and it includes the industrial park, and then other businesses and homes up through 105 and 5 towards Derby. And you'll see this yellow line here is the boundary limit between the city of Newport and the town of Derby. Some background and history on the project. So in 1997, the city of Newport and the Village of Derby Center executed an interlocal agreement for the water system, for the rights and the purchase for the water from the Village of Derby Center. In 1999, the connection between the city and the village water system was constructed to primarily service the city industrial park, as they currently were not served by the city's water system. So the city paid for the construction of the 12-inch water line, the meter vault, known as Derby Meter Vault, flow control valve, and appurtenances along Route 105 and 5 on Derby Road. And as part of that project as well, the Talon Hill Reservoir, the existing reservoir, the floating cover, was replaced by the city as part of that project. In 2006, the village changed the water rates to include a ready-to-serve fee. It altered the existing interlocal agreement between the city and the village, and the city paid under protest because of the change in the interlocal agreement. In 2008, the city began the Talon Water Service feasibility study. And in 2009, the city filed a dispute against the village in regards to the change in the interlocal agreement and the ready-to-serve fee. In 2016, the city initiated the study we're here to talk about today for the East Side Water Tower. And in 2017, the city and the village reached a resolution on the water dispute that started back in 2006. So the purpose and needs. The East Side Water Tower is needed or is being pursued because of the disagreement between the city and the village. The dispute goes back to the 1997 interlocal agreement. And the agreement is necessitated, the dispute has necessitated that the city explore other options for servicing the east side of the city. While the resolution between the city and the village absolved past disputes, it does not address all concerns, specifically future users and connections within the east side service area. Currently, the city cannot add new connections without village approval. And the city would like to have controlled authority over the east side to service the existing customers as well as future customers along that area. And that area, as I mentioned, includes industrial park, and also businesses and homes along 105. That area cannot currently be serviced by the existing facilities for the city due to the elevation and the pumping capacity prohibit the servicing of this area from their existing facilities. The new water storage tank would be supplied by the city of Newport Water System and allow the city to control their own destiny, make decisions on future connections and new changes of use. The one part of this project is the existing Talon Hill Reservoir. The cover, as I mentioned, it was replaced in 1999. It has about a 20-year life expectancy, and we're reaching the end of that 20 years. And it's also been addressed by the state in the recent sanitary survey. This services the low zone of the city of Newport Water System, which would include everything in the downtown area, also towards East Main Street by the schools, the high school, out towards the hospital. Everything within that area is serviced by the existing Talon Hill Reservoir. The reservoir relies on the floating cover for the protection from the elements and also from wildlife and intrusion. So this is a little bit more detail on the east side water service area. Just to point out a few things. This is the existing Talon Hill Reservoir where the floating cover is. That services everything on the low side of the distribution system. And as part of the proposed project, we're looking at a new 450,000-gallon water tower. We've currently got it sited on the existing parcel that is owned by the city of Newport within the town of Derby. We are looking at other options to move that within the city limits, but those are still ongoing. As part of the project, there'll be a new booster pump station. This booster pump station will have a duplex booster system that draws water from the existing Talon Hill Reservoir and then pumps it up to the new water tower. And then there'll also be a new transmission main from the Derby Meter Vault. We'll connect on just on the downside of that, on the city-owned side, and bring that transmission main up to the new water tower. And then there'll also be a few other modifications. The connection between the Village of Derby Center and the city of Newport will be disconnected, so there'll be no water passing through that at the completion of the project. And there'll be some minor modifications to this existing 12-inch water line along Route 105. As I mentioned, that water line was installed in 1999, still in good condition, so we're going to reuse as much of that as we can. There'll be some minor modifications around. As I mentioned, the Derby Meter Vault. There's also a pressure-reducing vault and a flow control valve located near the industrial park. That'll be modified or refurbished. The proposed project, there's four components to it. There's the East Side Water Tower. There's the booster pump station, transmission main modifications, and also the floating cover. The proposed project for the East Side Water Tower is going to be located on the south side of Derby Road. Approximate dimensions of the storage tank will be, excuse me, 25 feet in diameter by 120 feet tall. How we got to the total volume is based on what the average day demand will be for the existing users plus the future build-out, the 20-year design year. So the domestic demand for the storage tank is 100,000 gallons for domestic. And then for the additional 350,000 gallons, 350,000 gallons will be fire flow storage. So that's based off what the fire flow needs are in the east service area, based on two hours of maintaining fire flow. It's proposed to be a glass-to-steel tank. The reason we propose that is it offers a more long-term viability. There's less maintenance required, greater durability compared to a painted steel tank where every five, 10 years, you've got to have it drawn down, inspected, and repainted on occasion to make sure that you're preventing the painted steel from rusting. So with the glass-to-steel, it's got an interior glass, and then the exterior is epoxy-coated paint. There's less maintenance required with that. There's just some minor O and M costs that go with it on a yearly basis. We've also proposed an active mixing system, so that way the water in the storage tank doesn't freeze and it maintains the water quality. We don't just want to have that water sitting up there with the cold Vermont winters, potential for freezing. We don't want that to become an effect. So there'll be an active mixing system that continuously circulates the water through that storage tank, so that doesn't sit and potentially freeze. The booster pump station will be located adjacent to the existing Talon Hill Reservoir. It'll be a small building, approximately 20 by 20, with a duplex booster pump system that will move the water from the existing Talon Hill Reservoir up to the proposed water tower. It'll be used to fill the tower on a daily basis, that way the tower's full at all times. And if there's a fire, you've got that full capacity of volume on that east side to provide fire service. The modified transmission main, as I mentioned, a 12-inch ductile iron water line was installed in 1999, still in good condition. So we'll reuse that for the tank and the booster pump system. We'll eliminate the connection with the Village of Derby Center, and we'll need to install approximately 1,000 feet of new 12-inch water line from the Derby Meter Vault towards the proposed water tower. And we'll also add in a pressure-reducing valve and a flow control valve to allow water to supplement the low zone, so that if there is the need to supply water to the low zone or what's serviced by the existing Talon Hill Reservoir, there's an opportunity to draw from that water that's sitting up on the east side. And then the final component is the existing floating reservoir. A new floating cover to replace the existing polypropylene cover. And it will address one of the remaining deficiencies identified in the sanitary survey from the state drinking water, groundwater protection division. Costs, as I know that's a lot of people's concerns. This is the construction cost for the project. The transmission main is approximately $230,000. The storage tank and booster pump station is $1,780,000, and then the floating cover is $200,000. So total construction cost of $2210,000. Total project cost, which includes the construction costs which are just mentioned, also includes a 10% construction contingency, the engineering, for both the preliminary engineering, bond design and permitting, and then the construction phase services, and also other costs, which would be administrative, legal, fiscal, land acquisition permit fees. All of that is included in the total project cost, and that lands you at $3 million for the recommended bond Funding sources. We're pursuing the state of Vermont Drinking Water State Revolving Loan Fund. The loan is anticipated to be a term of 30 years at a negative 3% interest rate, which lands you at an annual loan repayment of $60,252 per year. We've been in correspondence with the state on this to make sure we're getting accurate numbers as possible. And this is what they've indicated to date, based on the figures we've provided them, the existing operation and maintenance costs for the yearly annual water budget. Repayment starts two years after substantial completion and is eligible for up to $25,000 in loan forgiveness. What this will look like for the water impacts to the users, as I mentioned, a $3 million bond vote, 30 years at negative 3% interest, and an annual loan payment of $60,000 and change. It's approximately $10 per quarter increase on the existing water users. So $40 per year equivalent. Project schedule. This is the first of two public informational hearings. The second will be on October 30. The bond vote's scheduled for November 7. Assuming a positive bond vote, we'll move forward with the final design after November 7. And we're towards a completion of the final design permitting for March of 2018, and then breaking ground beginning in May of 2018, with a completion by the end of the year of 2018, which, once substantially complete, would begin your one-year warranty period, at which point, in November 2019, the warranty would end. Before I open up the floor to questions, I wanted to give the opportunity to the city council to add any comments or points that they would like to make.
Anything, Mr. Wilson? Anything?
No.
Not right now? Okay. Just wanted to make sure the council had a chance. So then we'll open up to questions. Did you...
I have one question, I think. I just did a fast calculation of 30 times 60, 252, and the total comes out to something under $2 million. That's the effect of minus...
With the negative interest rate, correct?
Oh, okay. Thank you.
It's hard to fathom a negative interest rate.
Yeah. The negative interest rate is about equivalent to roughly a 35% grant.
Okay. I'm going to make sure I do that anytime.
I have a couple of questions.
When we actually vote on this proposal, is the water tower and the Talon Reservoir cover, that's all together, correct?
Correct.
Is there a reason why they're all together and one wasn't separated from the other?
The reservoir, the cover's going to need to be replaced eventually. It's ending at the end of its useful life, and it's been something that we...
Yeah, I realize.
It's been identified by the state.
But it seems to me that most people probably would agree that the Talon cover does need to be replaced, and they could agree with that. But it seems awfully... It just seems incidental that you have the two issues all for one particular vote rather than two separate votes. The other issue is the cost of our water through this project. Did you say it was $40 per quarter or...
$10 per quarter. $40 for the year.
I guess that's it for the moment. Oh, one other question. How often have we gone to Derby to ask for connections to, say, a new building that was built or whatever?
What we're doing, how often have we gone?
Yeah. I mean, is that a weekly or a monthly?
No, it hasn't been that. But I can tell you, after, how many years of negotiating, Mr. Wilson? You and I have been...
It's been good, seven years now.
Seven years at least, where they've threatened to shut off existing customers that we have. The reason, I know, I look at it as, as he said, we control our destiny. Right now, they could deny development in the city of Newport. We have to go to them. Any new connection along the Derby Road, whether it's in the Talon Farm or in the current existing industrial park, they could say no, which means then, in fact, they could say no to allowing us to grow in the city of Newport on Route 5. And that's a concern that I know we've had for a while, and we're really kind of through the loop, is when we were trying to negotiate a nice agreement, more than once they threatened to shut three existing businesses off. You know, it's kind of like a strong-arm thing. They didn't, but, John, did you have something?
Yeah, I'd like to add. We met the council and their village water committee. We hashed out an agreement. We shook hands on the agreement. This is good for both sides. Two days later, their lawyer said no. That sure soured the water, because I've always been a believer that if I shake hands on an agreement, you live up to it. I'm going to say this. Part of the agreement we have, just so people know what we're up against, when you come down the hill and see all those beautiful fire hydrants on Derby side of the road, we put them in, you guess what? We pay rent on our water, on our hookups to Derby. We pay rent for our hydrants. And that's not only threatening, and we've been to meetings in Derby, and flat right, they didn't want to talk to us. Okay, you know, I mean, you only get kicked out of so many meetings before you say, "Okay, I really don't want to talk to you anymore. You know, you're not nice." But if we are ever going to control Newport's destiny, this is the time to do it. Because right now, they can threaten to shut off any dang business, and they've done this to three of our businesses. And like, buy the reservoir, all that land, it could be developed, only if Derby gives us permission. And I say, I don't live in Derby, and I don't think that we have to be behoove and go up there and beg them to take care of the city of Newport. So I pretty well said my case. But when the entire committee and the entire council shook hands on an agreement, right over here in the UCA building, because the headmaster at the time was one of the three on the water committee, we paid for all the maintenance in the vault. We were going to split it. I'd say that's a pretty fair deal. No, no. We still maintain the vault for them. In '99, they wanted to get into the industrial park. We wanted water in that. So I'm going to tell you honestly, we signed a not-too-good agreement with them. We gave away the farm that Newport paid for. And this is our only chance to get out of that agreement. And I still think that I will never go back up there again and beg them to do stuff in Newport. Okay, I've said it.
Just one more question.
Yep.
The tower's going to be built on Derby property. Is that correct?
We own a parcel of land. They can give the technical details as to why that was chosen. It's basically the height, I'll let you say the...
Yeah, so we're looking at the minimum ground elevation, what we can find to service the pressures within the Route 105, 5 area. And there's strict requirements on what's the maximum height we can build. So...
So the property is or is not going to be built on Derby property?
It's nothing set in stone right now. This is the parcel that's owned by the city currently, and obviously that's owned by them. But we're working through option agreements with potential landowners to move it within the city boundary.
And if it is, if per se it is built in Derby, will it be a non-taxable entity? Or will the Village of Derby tax that property?
That's a good question. I believe there's a portion of it that they can tax. I don't know that they'll be able to tax the value, the full value. But I do believe there's a portion of it, and I can let you know for sure.
And it would be in the town Derby but not in the vault of Derby Center?
Yeah, in the town, totally. Another thing, reason with the tower, I know a question was raised to me, and also to James over here, why can't each business, if they build something, put in a pressure valve? And you were explaining to me why the state frowns upon that.
Yeah, the state frowns upon individual homes having their own booster pump stations within, due to suction and concerns with contamination if you suck a water line dry. And we also looked at evaluating putting larger hydromatic booster pumps into service all Route 105. The concern there is, you can do it, but if you are to provide fire flow as well, it becomes very costly from a capital expense to have a fire pump included in there where it's only run on demand when there's a fire situation. It's a high capital cost with not a lot of value that you see every day. And it's a huge energy cost once that fire pump's turned on.
Thank you.
Ken?
Yeah. How long is the contract with Derby? I guess what I'm getting at is, if the water tower goes through, are we still bound by the contract to get water from them?
We have a way out. So as soon as we know that the water tower is viable and we're
getting close to doing the switch-over, we have a conversation with Derby, and we go through a process for the disconnection.
I'm proud of this negotiation that we had. Oh, I get Tom, then Brian. Tom, and then...
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. I just want to add to Mr. Wilson was talking about some of the meetings. I've been involved in this, went to court, and we were dragged into court, so I've been involved in the whole thing, very from the get-go. I came from Elmore years ago, it was probably three, four years ago. John Ward had gone to the village select board asking to hook up. We were just talking about pressurized buildings. We have five in our old system on the Derby Road, and the state, as Nate had said, frowns on them. So we've been trying to get them off the old system onto our brand-new water main. John got the verbal to go ahead and do it. We were actually in the process of hooking that line up down in Elmore Dairy when the town, Village of Derby showed up with a select board member and told us to cease. I already hooked up the main, reded, hooked up Elmore Dairy, asked us if we had it writing, if we have it writing.
Just a quick correction. It would have been a village trustee member, not a select board. It would have been a village trustee member.
So just to add to it of what we've been dealing with. So currently, we still have those five businesses that have a holding tank with a pressurized system in their buildings. And a few of them are major, big buildings, import plastics, that really use sprinkler systems, so they expand and move somewhere new.
Thank you. Brian?
Yeah, so I have a couple of questions here. The reservoir now, where it sits, it feeds everything at its height now, does it?
It does not have enough pressure to feed the Route 5 Derby Road. That is why we had the agreement with the village way back in '99, when the industrial park went in. There was not enough pressure from that reservoir to feed the new industrial park. So there is not enough pressure from that to feed.
Why I asked was that the reservoir, where it is now, if, say, it can be protected better by just building a stone wall or a cement wall around it and to put a cover on it, so you protect it from the elements and everything else. And if you put, if you put a pumping station or a pump in there, and you put a couple of pressure tanks in there to keep the pressure up, the height is evidently okay. It's just the pressure that you need. And with those pressure tanks, you can keep the pressure to everybody that needs water all the time and keep it continuously.
So we evaluated that. The concern here is this existing Talon Hill Reservoir, the elevation of it is much lower than 105, Route 5. We evaluated what you're indicating, the pressure tanks. Unfortunately, if you do that, it eliminates all the fire protection along Route 105. And so that's, you know, as this is an industrial area, fire protection is key to maintaining that. So just the booster pump station, the hydromatic tanks, really leave you short-changed without having fire protection to service some of your bigger industries within the east side service area.
The other question is, now, if this land is in Derby, I have no idea where it is, but it's owned by the city of Newport, can that be landlocked by Derby, so you can't get into it, or anything else, if it's in the middle of their surrounding territory? Can you point it out up there?
The existing parcel owned by the city of Newport is right here. And for reference, this is the boundary line. This is Tavern on the Hill right here. And these are the storage units.
Right.
On the, is this Clyde?
Crawford.
Crawford. Pardon me.
Yeah. Okay. It's up near where the, you've got the storage sheds.
Exactly, yep.
Right. So Brian, if you're going up, if you know where Century 21 is, the rental place, if you go up in that area. Wayne?
Port a clarification. So on the permission from Derby for new connections, that also applies to existing customers. If you had a vacant building that was in the Newport city limits, or you had somebody that wanted to come in on a change of use, the city would still have to go to Derby to get approval for that change. So I think that's an important distinction. It's not just for future development or new connections. It also affects existing customers up there. up there.
But also, we go to the village.
You go to the village.
It's not the town.
It's not the town, it's the village.
It is creating-
And what our, what our new contract does is we're paying their current rate. So we're, we, the city is, is paying the rates of use for the existing businesses based on the Derby ordinance. That is different than the Newport city ordinance, and the city is eating the difference. So there, they have a copyright and ordinance that allows them to charge their debt service, and their debt service could change quarter to quarter, where our rates and fee structure is based on a fixed cost and user rate, so it's a little more predictable. That's something we felt was really important.
I know, I spoke with some of the, some Derby Village customers, and they said, the bill can jump up one quarter and then come back down, then jump back up, and so they don't have like a steady, a steady billing for the water. And it's just the way that ordinance is written. And so they can just go in and vote to raise the rates overnight, basically. Frank, did you have something? And then Ann.
Yes, I think this is predicated on this negative three percent interest rate. I just wondered what kind of guarantees or how confident you are. It seems like a pretty low rate to, looking forward here, to use. What's your basis for that?
The basis is, we've been in constant communication with the drinking water SRF program manager to share what the existing operation and maintenance is for the city of Newport, and also understand what the total project cost is and how many, what we call equivalent residential units are, to try and compare a residential unit to an industrial unit. So, one residential unit is approximately two-hundred-and-ten gallons per day. Obviously, an industrial user uses more than that, so they could be five, ten equivalent units or equivalent residential units. So that's all been accounted for in the calculation for the negative three. What the drinking water SRF loan tries to do is look at what the median household income for the city of Newport residents is, and make sure, or try to limit the cost to the users so that the water rates don't exceed one percent. Obviously, depending on where you are, that changes, but their goal is to have the water rates equal to one percent of your median household income. So if you start to go over that one percent, then they start dialing down the interest rate. The max they can do is negative three for the interest rate.
Did you agree if that number is normal, say zero or one percent?
It changes the cost.
Picture changes the budget, and this is an issue for the taxpayers of Newport, because it's going to be a debt service that's going to be paid coming from the budget, so the taxes rate would increase in that.
This is only being, this total project cost is only being accounted for on the water customers, it's not affecting taxes.
Based on the three percent, negative three percent?
Yes.
Yes. And then secondly, question, second question. Normally, a developer, this type of industrial development, you would be looking to the developer to cover these infrastructure costs. You haven't mentioned that at all. So the city is doing this on the idea that it will help in the future? What's the idea here about development? Developer paying part of the cost. For example, we do a development, we're a developer. We're, we have to pay for all these costs. In fact, in case of Mount Vernon, we did, we didn't have sufficient pressure. We had thirty pounds outside of golf course, we refilled Mount Vernon Estates. And we put our tank and booster pump in, which was acceptable at that time by the state, and that's certainly been much lower cost, of course, supplies, aggregate pressure for that type of development, and we continue to do so. So I mean, three million dollars is a lot of money to put forward on, for the small, relatively small area of Newport compared to the total. I don't know, we have any figures to give us about the value of the development, of the industrial development versus the residential, going to benefit from this.
I don't have any numbers in regards to that in the industrial. I would say, and I don't mean to speak for the city council, but this is an existing system, or existing users in the city of Newport, looking to disconnect from the Village of Derby Center and supply the existing users. So while it accounts for future growth, as this isn't a, you know, a twenty-year fix, this is more thirty, forty, fifty years, we need to account for that additional development in there. And you can't sequence this project within, you know, you build half the tank and then you come back and build the full tank once more development comes. It's, it's all or nothing. So, that's one point, and I can't remember where I was going to go. Oh, the other thing was, you mentioned it only services the east. That's why we built in some contingencies where you can provide for the flow in the water tower on the east side to supplement the low zone, for the need of emergency, if there's a large fire downtown, also for just recirculation. So that has been built in mind, so it doesn't, it's not just going on the east side and only servicing the east side. It does have benefits to the whole system, more of a long-term approach.
Do you have something?
Yeah, I was just going to clarify the interest rate. So the state makes that determination, that's not our call, that's not the city's call. As we made mention, you know, the information goes to them, they run the numbers based on all those criteria, so they, they make that call. It can be anywhere from a negative to a plus three percent. In this case, it's a thirty-year term again, and again, they're trying to get that down to this one percent. The assets here all have a thirty-year term or greater than that, so that's not a concern here either. To speak to a little bit about the water rates for the city, the city has some of the lowest water rates on what they pay on an annual basis or quarterly basis, I think of probably almost any municipality in Vermont right now. The average water rate on a yearly basis is probably about four-hundred-and-fifty dollars a year. So if you start serving other communities, the city's quite a ways below that, even with this project, you know, at an increase of ten dollars. And I don't discount that fixed person, that some people, dollars, but it's still a lot of money. However, when you're comparing, you know, what the city resident is paying on a monthly basis, and you're all comparing to our cell phone bills and cable TV and things that aren't really, you know, that are discretionary, you know, the water, public water continues to be, has incredible value, you know, so.
Brian, I've got some ahead of you, Brian. You've gone once, I get lots more people go. Ann and-
Yeah, when Brian mentioned pumping out of the existing reservoir, and you mentioned that it was too low, is there any value to having a reservoir that's, an additional reservoir at a higher place? Is that cheaper conceivably, and did you consider it? And are there any other ways, other than building water tower, of storing water and giving it to the users?
So, the storage tank's the most economical approach for having storage both for average day demand and needed fire flow. So obviously, you could pump more if you wanted to, but then you get into larger pump sizes, more horsepower, more electrical draw, more capital cost. So the storage tank is really the most economical approach for meeting demands, both for the users and the fire flow. You know, mentioning the elevations, this is really, the area's constrained by the existing topography, there's not a lot of places to just go throw this tank. We've really evaluated where the potential elevations or sites were to meet the criteria. We're trying to maintain forty PSI, forty-five PSI at the high point, which would be near the boundary between the town of Derby, would be the highest point, while not exceeding a hundred PSI as you go farther down Route Five. So there's not a lot of land options or areas to put a tank to service the east side. If that answers your question.
I disagree with that.
Well, let me, oh, Ann, no, that's, yeah, good access.
Last time you gentlemen spoke, there was a question raised about water meters, and whether it was necessary for the funding for us all to be metered. Some of us are metered, many people want to be metered, and some don't want to go near it. Where is, where does that fit into this?
So that was for the USDA Rule Development Program, and we sensed the system would need to be fully metered to qualify for that. We haven't pursued it because that would need to be completed, the system would have to be fully metered by the time this project is complete. So that's why we pursued the drinking water SRF loan terms for that.
But to follow up on that, if in fact more people are metered and the use goes down, how does that affect the interest rate, negative three?
It doesn't, the water usage isn't affected by the interest rate.
Well, our costs would go down.
For those on meters, yeah.
Yes.
I mean, what would, you know, in the full analysis on the rates, you know, the usage etc., hasn't been fully discussed, but what would happen is, you would want to build the debt service into your fixed rate. Obviously, with the meters, there's a fixed rate per quarter, and then your just, your usage rate.
So that could affect-
That ten dollars would-
That could affect the interest rate out further, if we have a lot metered?
So we'd be, no, it wouldn't affect the interest rate. The interest rate, the annual cost would just be incurred on the fixed rates, whether it be non-metered or metered users.
That's, and speaking of the rates, that's one of the reasons why in the past we didn't qualify for grants. They considered our rates too low. Nothing to do with meters. We were going to go for grants to put in meters at one time, or, you know, looked at grants, they said, well, your water rates are too low to qualify for any grant. So it kind of backs up what Wayne was saying about our water rates. We've been told our rates are too low, which is, let's see, who, Brian, and then I think, did you have another one, Ken?
Just one quickly.
Hey, Brian, and then Ken.
Oh, okay.
And then Robin after. Brian, Ken, and then Robin. I got my person kind of helping me here, just so I can-
I think Susan has a hand up here.
No, I got her. Yeah, I got Sue, yeah, I got Sue.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah. So I'm just trying to direct traffic here, so, yeah.
Okay, now, Brian?
Yeah.
There's a problem in building, could you tell me what the pressure is now at the end? Is it like twenty PSI for water right now? And you say mostly, it's got to be between forty and fifty to give you a good pressure in the house. So what's the water pressure right now? And if you build a tank that's right over the water reservoir right now, what it is, you can build a tower right there.
Couldn't, the tower would be, have to be much greater than a hundred-and-twenty-five feet over here.
Why?
Because the elevation difference. And I, I know, I don't know what the elevation is off the top of my head at the existing Palaner reservoir, but the ground elevation that we're looking at is approximately one-thousand feet above sea level, and it's much less at the existing reservoir. So whatever that difference is, you have to add on top of the existing a hundred-and-twenty-five feet that we have for the tower.
Okay, that existing reservoir now does still feed all that all the way up there, doesn't it?
No, so this, this existing reservoir serves everything in the city, down towards the west. Everything that I show here is serviced by the Village of Derby Center.
So if you disconnect Derby Center from that, so they're actually supplying us water for that part of the-
Correct.
Which a lot of people probably don't realize that they, they do that. So if you disconnect Derby from that, then, so do we know, so do we know for sure that the pressure can, how, why, if you have to build this tank to get the pressure up to where it goes now?
Those customers along Route Five on that existing pipe-
Right.
Right there, will still have, will get water from the tower. They will become Newport City customers. That was the agreement, if the tower gets built, when we worked out this negotiation. Those existing customers right through there, plus some undeveloped land that's actually in Derby, would become Newport customers.
Brian, are you asking more about the current situation? Like if there's, there was a cutoff right now?
Right.
If we were cut off from Derby?
Right.
So if you're cut off with Derby, these, these individuals would not have water?
No, they would on that side. We're talking the Newport City side.
The Newport side.
Which would be the tavern, Federal Credit Union.
The tavern is above the reservoir.
Right, right.
So water doesn't run uphill.
Okay, that's what I-
So we have, right.
What's below it right now? If, if Derby cut off the water, what, what part of that area would be still being fed?
None adequate.
The reservoir water.
All the water-
Tell me answer that.
All the water that is servicing this east side, this service area, goes through this meter vault. It passes through the meter vault. So if the Village of Derby Center closed off the meter vault, no one within the east service area would have water. All the water's coming from, water's flowing this way-
Yeah.
Down.
Okay. So I understand you're high-end, but there are homes that would still be fed in Newport, right there, right? That are in Newport.
If they're lower than the reservoir.
If they're below the reservoir.
It's an adequate, it's an adequate ground.
Yeah, okay.
Most or all of that area would have either none or a trickle.
Now, Tom can refresh my memory. Was the water main built with the village when we had the big fire?
Yes. You mean at the restaurant?
At Columbia.
Oh, Columbia?
So, and that's a case where, if I had to, that's a case where we almost drained the reservoir completely, if I had to been for the pumping out of the lake. I mean, there was some stuff there, I know they were concerned, and this was also put in as a backup for the, for fire suppression, because there was, that huge fire at Columbia Forest, they almost basically drained the reservoir up there. And so this whole line, another reason, back in nineteen ninety-nine, when not only the thought of the city back then was to feed the new industrial park, it was also to serve as a backup to the east side of Newport in case of another large, major fire. I know that, that was part of the thinking of that whole line also. Now, Ken, and then Robin.
With the, with the reservoir and a tower, is there going to be a limit on industry that can go up in there if they want to, or will that handle anything that can go in there?
We've built in, I don't want to say everything, obviously, you could build the world, but we, way too far. We've got a hundred thousand gallons built in for domestic demand up in the east service area, which includes the industrial park, and there's approximately ten to twenty thousand that's currently used up in that area.
Robin, go in.
So if there was a fairly sizable development in the next fifteen years, say, on the Palan Farm, let's say, and that's a whole bunch of new users in the water system, that still wouldn't change that ten dollars a quarter, but would it bring down the rest of the, would it affect the rest of the rate? You know what I mean? You'd have more people using, therefore more people paying in.
Um, yeah, I don't know, but I know on the, on the, you've got to keep two things separate, but I know if we had all that development, on the tax side, it would help the grand list. On the water side, I'm, I'm not sure how you-
The more users you have, the more you can spread it out. So obviously, if there's more users, it will get added in.
So, so the council might actually say, well, we don't need to charge ten dollars.
Potentially.
I mean, they could be looking at it.
If you get more users, there's a need, there could be a need to reassess the water rates.
Okay. So it's just like an idea?
Yeah. Okay. Very good. Anything else? Any other questions? Then we'll close this and we'll go into the regular city council. Thank you for coming and-
Thank you, ma'am.
-for the fine presentation.
And just, just to reiterate, there's going to be one more public hearing on October thirtieth.
Yep.
And that's going to be at six-thirty here, because that's not a regularly scheduled meeting.
And there is some information, this pile is information-
All right, if folks, if folks want to take this, maybe the press wants to take it, these two-sided copies that sort of give a snapshot of anybody who's interested in that. Can I give that to you?
I think it's a great thing.
Do you already do? Or just take a pile of it?
Sure. Okay, so the next item will be to approve the minutes of October second, two thousand seventeen. I've been entertaining a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of two October, two thousand seventeen.
Motion made, is there a second?
Absolutely.
Made a second, a discussion on the minutes. Hearing none, all those who favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, aye, advocate, motion carries. The next one is- The next one is comments by members of the public. We have Penny Thomas, and her topic is, what, aviation?
No, I question.
Oh, question. I thought it looks like aviation. It does, looks exactly like aviation to me for some reason.
I used to get Cs in grade school for handwriting, so I apologize.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Council. Penny Thomas, City of Newport resident. First of all, I appreciate your service as council members. I, I don't see any of you, or most of you nearing retirement age, and I imagine your salaries, uh, keep that well in the future anyway. My question is, I, I appreciate the, the agenda. I'm wondering about the, what it would take for us to be able to see the agenda in advance in the Newport paper so that we could tell what is happening. I, I appreciated seeing regular meeting, but I didn't know what was happening, and I just wondered if, if we could know in advance what the agenda is going to be.
The agenda gets faxed to the Newport paper.
The Newport Chronicle, the Caladonian Record, it gets posted on our website, um, by Friday afternoon. So we have it distributed in all the, um, we have it distributed by Friday.
Okay.
So it can only be in on Monday if they choose to print the agenda. It's in Monday's paper. Because if the agenda does not get approved till about, generally I approve it by noon on Friday so that we can get it out, because it's sometimes last minute items to go on the agenda.
Okay, well, then that's my failure. I'm sorry, I didn't, I'm, I'm into it. Now that I'm freed up on Monday nights, I might be able to attend occasionally, and I, I have, I do read the New, I do read the Newport Daily Express, yes? And it's in there?
They don't put the, they used to put in the complete agenda, but they stopped doing it, I forget how long ago now. Quite a while.
It's not there.
No, I know. They, they, they used to, when they, we used to fax the agenda to the paper, because, and then they would put it under the community bulletin board, or somewhere on that page, they would put the whole agenda. And now it's just saying that we have a meeting at 6:30 Monday.
Just a regular agenda. Well, I will be in touch with the Newport Daily, uh, no offense to the...
That's all right. You said right here.
Newport Daily. And, uh, apologies to the other good press here. And, uh, look forward to just being apprised, so that I know what is going on, so I can just be...
The agenda is posted on the website Friday afternoon. So if you happen to go to the city website, it's, uh, usually, the agenda's posted Friday afternoon.
Okay. Thanks, Andrew.
Okay. Then we have Brian McNeil, and he put the big hole.
Yes, I just want to, this is old, old stuff, but I just, I got two minutes, I guess. Right? Okay, the big agenda, what to do with the hole. Okay, we got the hole. The city was warned in 2013 through 2017 of the possible fraud, corruption within the EB5 program nationwide. Was told that we had, I was told that we had no authority to regulate a buyer, owner, slash owner, on what to build as long as it met zoning slash planning criteria. People felt, why go to the meetings if the city showed no interest in ideas, whether they're good or bad? And my last thing is, I have a problem, and I want to redo that. I have a mental problem. Don't put that out of phase here. It is called nostalgia. Remembering what Newport City was and what we have now makes me sick.
Number four is the ratification of Republic Works contract. Laura, will you kind of give a brief summary?
Uh, we've just come out of contract negotiations with our Public Works Union, and I'm pleased to announce that we've come to agreement. The contract, I have the original here, and I'm asking for a vote from the full council to allow the negotiating team to sign this and order to ratify it. If the council approves that, um, I will get your signatures and copy this and provide a copy to the union. Any questions?
Yeah. Tell the rest of the council, I called, uh, the city manager today. On our copy we received, there was one signature missing from the union rep. It's two pages, and, uh, the copy we got didn't have it, but if it's ratified, we have his signature on the, the original, so.
I've got, there's two pages that need to be signed, so I've got them flagged, and it needs a full council vote. And then, uh, Mayor Manette, President Wilson, and I will sign this and date it together. Does anybody have any questions from the council?
Did you have a chance to review it? I'm using the packet. Any questions on the contract then? Then we would need a motion, if you so choose, to ratify this contract.
I will make that motion. You go ahead and ratify the, uh, union contract.
Motion been made and seconded.
I will second it.
Opened for discussion. Questions?
Um, might it be possible to, um, share with the public some of the more important points of the contract?
Sure. Um, working conditions stay relatively the same. The, um, wages are 3% each year, and we have switched our medical plan, something a little bit better. Those are the highlights.
Um, when you say 3% each year, how long does the contract run for?
Um, it's, uh, June 30th, 2020 is the duration.
Thank you.
Robin, did you have...
Well, just to follow up, um, is that, how does that compare to past contract? I mean, was it 3% the same in the past?
Yeah. It basically follows the pattern.
Yeah.
But with that in medical?
Different medical. Different, yeah.
But, but the increase similar across, across the city, different unions and so on.
Yes. Yes.
Could you go into a little detail about the, the differences in the medical coverage? Is it just a question of finding a different provider, or...
Um, the, um, this is very complicated because I'm not a medical insurance salesperson. So please bear with my weaknesses. Um, currently the city offers the MVP Platinum Plan, and, um, we've changed that to the MVP Gold, and I think the initials are HDHP. So that offers a slightly different, better prescription plan.
Does it, does it change the city's cost substantially, or...
Um, it's not a substantial change. Because you're talking medical insurance.
Yeah, it is the gold, HDHP. It's the HD. Anything else then? Then all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose. The ayes have it. Motion carries.
This is just, are there any other negotiations ongoing? Are you all done?
We're done. Right?
For contracts, for, for union contracts, we're done.
That's the last one for the cycle.
For the cycle, yes. Couple more years.
We can breathe for about six months.
I'll have you give, Laura, a brief overview.
Okay, so last year at about this time, NBDA came forward with an opportunity for the City of Newport to participate in a coalition, a grant coalition, to apply for a brownfields assessment grant. Uh, we, the members of the coalition at the time were St. John's Ferry and Newport, and NBDA was the administrator of the grant. We had a public meeting, um, the grant was filed, and unfortunately at that time it was not chosen. Now there is another round available for FY 2018, and NBDA has invited the City of Newport and the town of St. John's Ferry to participate again under the same circumstances as last year. What will be required is a letter of support from the city. Uh, there'll be about 20 years, um, excuse me, 20 hours a year over a three-year period. The maximum, the grant, um, or the, the amount that we're requesting is 600,000. There will be another public hearing on this, um, to have a conversation with community members from both St. John's Ferry and Newport to sort of tease out where the areas for evaluation could be. For example, last year we talked about the Main Street development. We talked about the Bogner site. There were a couple of other sites in the city that would qualify as well. So, um, I do have some information in your packets about the grant itself, and would ask that the city council vote to authorize moving forward with this grant application and allowing the mayor to sign a letter of support.
Questions from council members? If you, if you so choose, need a motion?
I have one question. You're talking Newport and St. John's Ferry. Is Barton involved?
No.
Because they have in the public meeting, Barton.
Correct.
They say halfway?
Yes. They chose a halfway point, and if the council chooses to move forward with this, I've got some notices of the hearing, of the, you know, here that people can take and, and know about it, but I wanted you to vote first.
Hi, I was curious about Barton, but yeah, and I was sort of halfway between Newport and St. James, why they chose it, yeah. So we would need a motion?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I'm moved that you, uh, that we joined this effort, applied this grant, and then you signed the letter.
Motion been made. Is there a second?
One second.
Made and seconded. Mr. Wilson seconded. Discussion on this. Then all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Ayes have it. The next item is the financial audit review, and we have received a copy of the audit in that packet and the associated letters. Did you have anything you want to kind of go over, highlights of the audit?
I'm pretty happy about it. I'm happy about it because, um, I think it's a very strong audit, and our department heads, our city clerk and treasurer's office, and the municipal offices on the second floor worked very, very hard to carry out the functions of our budget. And, um, I would draw your attention to page three, which, which is the fund balance. And you're going to see that there is a restricted fund balance of $82,000 that represents the Palmerlow donation to the Centennial. Um, the committed funds of 296,371 are representative of funds committed, um, for the sinking funds. Last year, the city council voted to move $130,000 to budget offset. We have the sinking fund, the, uh, the Coventry Street sinking fund, the tennis court sinking fund, and committed for reappraisal, and that's where those funds come from. The assigned 17,000 is left over from two years ago, and those are funds that are set aside to refurbish the city clerk's office and make that a little more safe and secure for employees. So that'll be happening this winter. The unassigned is the amount that we're trying to grow. That's the amount that we would need in the event of an emergency. We don't want to have an emergency, but if we do, that amount is where, um, we would need to tap into. That amount grew by, there with me?
I think it was 22,000 or 25.
About, yeah. Oops, on the wrong page. It was 325, 621. With our frugal efforts on the budget, it's now 356, 527. So those are trophies. Happy about that. If anybody has any questions on that, happy to answer what I can.
Anybody have any questions on the audit?
Well, actually, audit reports are a little difficult to digest.
I know, it's not the most enjoyable reading.
Yes. So the two letters that came with the report, if there were findings, that's where they would be?
Yes.
It wasn't very clear if there were findings, and it didn't appear, but if there were, there was anything significant.
There were no findings.
No findings? Awesome. Congrats.
That's why I'm so happy.
Yes.
Very cool.
We've had them in the past, and there was a period of time where the audit, the audit would go for what, a little more than a week, and that was what, two days?
Yeah.
So they can come in, they do the audit, and then they...
Get everything down.
They get everything down.
Teamwork.
It's teamwork.
Yes. All right. Anything else? Quick question.
Who was the audit firm, and did they issue an opinion letter, and was it unqualified?
The auditor is Kido, Branding, and Sargent, the firm that we've been using for several years. They issued their, their, um, letters.
An opinion?
Yeah, their opinion letters. I believe, you put that online? And you put the entire audit, I believe?
It wasn't there this morning. Is there?
I read it online, so I know it's there.
Great.
I mean, I don't know how, I don't remember where it is, but it's there.
It's attached to the...
It wasn't attached to the agenda.
It was this morning at nine o'clock, yes.
There are two agendas that are posted for today. One has attachments and one does not. Right. So if you have the long one, you get nothing. So that's probably...
Probably one was the agenda posted Friday, and then there's a whole nother copy that was posted again this morning.
To clarify, one is on the calendar sort of listing, and the, the other one, if you go and actually ask for agendas, that's where it is. That's confusing.
Oh, well, we all, we'll, we'll love to make it, we'll, we'll love to make it smoother. Uh, we'll see what we can do on the web to make, site to make it smoother.
Do you have copies of the, I'm an auditor, so you know, I don't find it boring reading. I really like to read the management letter and the auditor's opinion. But I can go on...
If it's online, I'm happy to hand mine over.
Okay. You know, the books we like to keep, I don't want to send, we only get a dozen of them, and we keep them for eternity. Sue, why don't you stop by the office tomorrow? We actually have one printed out for the main copy on your desk, on your counter. We do it that way. And like, you keep the books forever.
Okay. We'll move on. Mr. Johnson, new business? Mr. Wilson?
Nope.
The new business, did you want to...
Yeah, you go right ahead.
To bring that up?
Yeah.
We need to set, this is for, let me get this straight again, because I just received this from Charlie. This is the council, okay, the city council will be warning the public hearing notice for the amendments to the municipal plan. It will be in the November 3rd newspaper. This is, and then the public hearing for the council will be November 20th before the city council meeting. Um, and so Charlie wanted me to make sure I had that on the record so that we have that date. So the warning will be in the November 3rd. The public hearing will be November 20th before the regular council meeting, and that is on the amendment... And that is on the amendment, the amendment to the municipal plan.
Is that the addition of the maps?
Yes.
It's strictly the maps?
Okay. And then the only other new business, I had the pleasure of attending the downtown, designated downtown retreat that was held at Grand Isle. I got to chat with other downtown coordinators regarding how their designated downtowns are working. Got to interact with the state folks on the designated downtowns. So it was very educational, very, I enjoyed it. It was last Wednesday and Thursday over at Grand Isle. So I spent doing that, I just wanted to let the council know. That's all I have, new business?
Yes. This could be for either Tom or Laura. There's a pole, the utility pole, the Mon electric co-op, it's 12296E, which is over on Pine Street. It's right when you go off the, the pavement. You start to go down into the camps and those new houses in that area. It's extremely dark down there. And when we did that right around about two, three years ago, I don't recall if we decided we were going to put one in there or not, but it really is very dark there. And the residents have asked if they can have a light put on that pole that's already there. And that's what I have.
I'd be interested to know if that's one that was removed.
That's why I. I would hope that we hadn't removed that one, but.
There was some changes.
There were, there were quite a few, quite a few, so.
What was the number of that pole again?
It's right at the end of where Clover Drive goes in.
Anything else, anything new?
Uh, yes, briefly, two things. First, the nonprofit that the city has worked with and hopes to work with again in the future, the Watershed Association, has existed for ten years, but now has its first employee. So I think that's started today. Also happens to be my wife, but just to congratulate her, and looks forward to working with the city going forward. And number two, this Thursday at noon, ham and beans dinner, free and opens a public welcome for all at the United Church of Newport. So I have the menu this time, there you go. Ham and beans, coleslaw, all the fixings.
Okay.
All welcome, come have an office party. It's a nice way to get together.
And you said MW River's ten years old now?
Ten years old, celebrated ten years over the summer.
Just the new business is the, now that the council has approved moving forward the brownfields grant, is, the public hearing on that is Wednesday, November 1st, six o'clock to seven o'clock at the Barton Memorial Building.
Okay, very good. Then we move old business, Mr. Johnson. Mr. Wilson?
I just wanted to mention that I think it was just about two weeks ago, I attended the Efficiency Vermont presentation that was at the Gateway. And it was unfortunately very poorly attended, but it was a really awesome presentation. And I learned a lot about what Efficiency Vermont, where they get their funding, how it gets dispersed. They're behind a lot of, behind a lot of things in our community that you wouldn't know they're there, such as weatherization, everybody knows about the light bulbs. There's heat saver loans that they do. They're, they seem like they really do a heck of a lot for the state.
Good. Anything else?
No, that's it, thank you.
I have no old business, anything?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Laura, any old business? Okay. Then the next regular city council meeting will be November 6th, 2017. There'll be a public hearing on the water tower.
On October 30th.
October 30th, okay, so we have a special public hearing on that, so. Okay, so, let me go through this again. The next regular council meeting will be Monday, November 6th, 2017. However, there's going to be a second public hearing on the east side water tower, October 30th at six thirty PM. Ooh, cabbage lady. And then the public vote scheduled for the bond is November 7th at eight, between eight AM and seven PM. And then the next Centennial Planning Committee meeting will be October 25th, 2017, five to seven PM. And now we need a motion to adjourn at 19:46. Motion made, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, we're adjourned.